Clerk, please call the roll.
Benson.
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Stelling?
There.
Valencia?
Here.
Item four is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 6, 2016. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $134,443.66 and payroll expenses of $118,768.50. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Fisher, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item six, reports from boards and officers. A is Personnel Committee Meeting from September 6, 2016. Councilman Miller?
At that meeting, we had two gentlemen from Colonial Life Insurance that spoke with us about several things were discussed at that. The Colonial Life insurance was discussed because of the last open enrollment. We have, I think, three or four different companies that offer products, and none of those people showed up at the open enrollment. Some employees that had questions couldn't discuss that with anybody. We don't have enough employees that were going with any one company for them to justify sending somebody up. The two gentlemen from Colonial Life did say that they would come if we went with exclusively Colonial Life. They would ensure that somebody's here every time we have an open enrollment. They offer very similar products. After looking at their presentation, we discussed it, kind of concluded that that would probably be the best option for the employees so that they can have representation during that meeting. We also had a presentation from OMRF on improvement in the City of Alva Retirement Plan. We'll be moving forward with that. That will actually improve the growth of employee retirement and give a better rate of return on that. So if you have any further questions, Joe Don, you can probably answer a few more questions on it. Those will be two items to be discussed at that meeting.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Miller and Mr. Dunham regarding Personnel Committee Meeting? Wes, will you go ahead and give Finance Committee a report too?
Finance Committee meeting was prior to this meeting. We had a discussion again on the governmental rates that we'll be voting on tonight for our utility billing. We have been looking again at our finance report, which was in front of you this evening. If you have questions on that, myself or Joe Don can go over that. We had, on the claims, several large claims. We had work comp insurance claim. A fire pickup was in there, over $4,000. Fuel. We had several claims from other funds such as hotel, the big group, Hotel Tax Fund, Victory Car Show. Hangar construction at the airport, down payment on that building was $13,000. Other than that, we had fairly routine expenses. So that was basically it. If you have questions, yourself or Joe Don. Dr. Hannaford can answer.
Does the council have any questions regarding the Finance Committee meeting? Item C is the Library Board Annual Report. It's required by ordinance. The Library Board gives an annual report. And Sandra Hamilton is here to, as Library Director, to give that report.
Thank you very much. You're a colleague of ours for the last year, but we're doing some new city council meetings. This is a report that's also pretty relevant to the library board members. We did it a little differently this year. Instead of just doing a statistical report, I would go ahead and add some narratives. We're not going to go over those all tonight. And as people have known, we're pretty talkative. But I thought it was probably a good idea to talk to you. Some of you throughout this year, some discussions we've had, too, kind of give you some narrative of what we do through the library, a little bit different function, and some other city entities. And we still provide information that we do it in a little bit different way than maybe in past years we have done so. So to just kind of hit some highlights right now, the physical units that the library houses are over $4,000. In our circulation this year, it's just right over $9,000 materials. So of course, your materials are all checked out at the theater, but those are pretty consistent, pretty numbers, a lot of details. To me, the needs, the information needs of the public, we also provide for digital services. That's in the report. We belong to some consortiums and some other services like www.s history.com that people can access. And through those type of things, we use some consortiums for our ebooks and audiobooks and magazines. We offer another $42,000 materials that people can access free of charge. And we have over 4,700 registered library client members at this point in time. And we're allowed to build a community of libraries that do not have a college, that just uses for public purposes of getting information. We participate in our library loan program, that you can buy, use, what you can do, develop in the United States, and that gives you material that someone would want. We've held over 150 programs for children in the past year. And 29 programs are meetings or, for instance, like tomorrow, we could look at the calendar that will be, that brings them on tomorrow. As the very back of the report that was sent to you is our annual report. And that is the report that our San Diego public library allows us to qualify for state of the calendar. The questions I ask are both very differently from just the financial that the city would have. So I did include that, and then I included the numbers from previous year. And you can see where they're going, maybe split many different places that come from the libraries of the library. What's nice about the annual report now is my internet information. And I can go into out the year, and I can put in parameters of what libraries are sized, and I have similar demographics, and I can all see how these are going. And so we can kind of see that there's some areas maybe that, like a trench are happening that we're not addressing, or I think it could be better to preserve them. One of the other things in the report that Joe Don and I had discussed is a good section here about future concerns and considerations. So I do put some of that here. A library in any community is a place, is one of the first places that people come to visit. Whether for a visitor, whether they're kind of doing business here in town, they kind of come to check out our library. And I didn't go back for the whole year, but the last two weeks, in the last two months, we had 130 visitors that used up our library. That doesn't count ones that walk through our door asking for information. Community, or a fine place, or a place maybe just to kind of leave a library in our community. So we are one of the very active entities in the community. One of the concerns we have is that 153 years old is given to the city. It is a one-stop facility. Quite a gift to the city now that most of our library directors and peers are so jealous of me that it's kind of fun to go to really simply to help them that. But the building is starting to have some issues. It's looking a little tired, it's outdated, the function that we use a lot of our home. So we are looking at some plans and trying some kind of renovation. We started that before we had their issues, and also that's been resolved. We are looking in the future to continue working that. So we have several meetings between utilities, foundation, library board, and sort of kind of seed, or even try, or even use people, sort of the library, and also the rest of the city. So if there's any, if you have any questions, have any concerns that you have, anything I talked about, please get a hold of me. At the current time, we're addressing a couple of projects. I know there's a moving whole grainy earth system, we can use a lot of interruption, but we do this specifically, and that's having an electrical power, so we can use it. We're looking on a bid to repair some of the grounding on the outside of basement. That needs to be repaired, a couple of years into the building. And we're waiting on a bid to posture the placement of lighting in the office with that LAV lighting, which is central for the library's electrical issue for the library. So we would like to, as a whole, the staff and I would like to thank the City of Alva for their financial support, the friends of the library for their fundraising efforts to support various programs, the local community board members that can make their time and professional skills, do help their time and library policies, our community partners and patrons that make the library a success and a leader in the community. And also make good, visit the library that has all the vast statistical data for the last, over the year, for last year's checkouts, but we've added that you do so as to prevent more questions. So if you have any questions, please come and visit. I would love to hear your comments or any ideas that you have.
Thank you, Sandra. Does the council have any questions for Sandra on her report?
Well, thank you so much. You do a great job with the library and certainly meet a need in our community, and we appreciate everything you do. Item D is City Mayor's Report. I want to recognize all the people with the Race Committee that put on the car show over the weekend. It was great success. Downtown businesses also did a great job of tidying up the square. And I think anytime we have big events in our community and we put our best foot forward, the recognition deserves to be out there. So the Race Committee, all the downtown folks, and the rest of the citizens that either helped out in volunteer capacities or attended the events, that's one of our big events for the year, and we've got more coming up. So keep up the good work, folks. That will conclude my report. I will say, Joe Don may hit on this, just one last thing. I did attend the Oklahoma Municipal League Meetings with Mr. Dunham last week, and we'll have some information coming up for future council meetings and considerations and that kind of thing. So stay tuned. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Item E is the City Business Managers' Report. Mr. Dunham?
Well, the first part I'd like to go over is how to hit on the finances a little bit. As far as our revenues were concerned, we are struggling with our sales tax, which is 80% of our annual budget. We are currently, right now, at about the same level we were in 2010, 2011. We're still watching sales tax very closely and trying to optimize those dollars wherever we can. Our charges for services are just slightly below where we were this time last year. We do expect that there should be some increases in that up in the near future. All of our other revenues are pretty much holding about the same levels they were at this time last year. But those two, being the two largest revenue items we have, we do watch very closely. When we look at our expenditures, we are slightly under in personal services where we were last year. Materials and supplies the same way, a little bit more in other services and charges. But overall, we're about $1.4 million less in expenditures than where we were at the same time last year. As far as revenues are concerned, we're about $400,000 less than where we were at the same time last year. Some of the things that we've got going on, as far as our projects are concerned, we have opened up the rec park mowing and maintenance bids. Those will be discussed at the meeting they will have on September 21st. We're currently, staff is currently working to prepare bid documents for the Airport Tea Hangar Foundation and Ramp Concrete. We're working to get that part done. As far as our street work is concerned, we have finished the asphalt overlays that we will do this calendar year. There are still, there's still street work, chip seals, things like that, that they will be working on right now. Street Department is working on Ceiling Street to do a chip, kind of zip that up and do a chip seal there. Should enhance that road quite a bit. We had some wind damage at the rec park over the, a couple of weekends ago. About on the weekend of September 10th, the wind bent the fencing on both the north end, south ends of the NWSU, what we call the NWSU soccer fields. The soccer field is primarily used primarily for NWSU games. The field is still usable at this point, but we're still, but we are currently seeking quotes on repairs. Sandra, she did talk quite a bit about her annual report. Thought maybe she'd hit on this, but I guess she forgot. The book fair, the book sale, annual book sale started today, will continue through October 1st. There are books there for all ages. The library is generally open from 9:00 a.m. to 5:30, Monday through Friday. I think on Mondays, they're open until 9:00 o'clock. Saturday, from 9:00 to 1:00. So if there are, if you're looking for a good book, library ought to have one. The Alve EMS has been working on a vial for life project. They rolled this out at the Woods County Fair, got some donations for medicine vials and some printing done from local companies to help people record their medical information so that when EMS, and put it in a specific spot, I believe it's in their freezer, so that when EMS gets onsite and if they are needing, they know where to go look to get vital medical information that they may need. Did receive notice from Waste Connections last week. As per their contract, we will be looking at a rate increase of about 0.84% starting in October. Currently, the City of Alva is updating, staff at the City of Alva is updating our red flag policy. And as per, as per the policy, we will have an update on that and any policy enhancements needed at the September, or the November meeting, one of the November council meetings. And Mayor and Council, that would be my reports. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you, Joe Don. Item seven is Discussion and Action on the Recommendation from the Planning Commission to Deny the Integris Healthcare Facility Application. At this point, we've had, this will be the second application for permit that council has heard. Planning Commission has met three times on this matter. This will be the council's second meeting. We've, I feel like the commission has been very diligent in seeking information from both Integris as well as local healthcare providers. They have been given, you know, written responses to their questions, and they've been given much discussion in the public meetings up to this point. Planning Commission did meet last, on the 9th, I believe, and looked at all the information they had, including, that information included the written questions and answers that they submitted. It also included the report from Id Bailey. It included the ordinance and the, what's stated in the ordinance as far as the requirements for issuing a permit in this case. And they, they had a really long discussion on all of those points. We have this item in front of us for consideration, and the criteria that we follow in issuing it or not issuing a permit, as outlined in the ordinance, stem around four questions. Will proposed healthcare facility contribute to the orderly development of hospital and surgical services in the City of Alva? Will the proposed healthcare facility not cause an undue financial or staffing hardship on any existing provider of essential hospital or surgical services in the City of Alva, including permitted facilities not yet completed? Will this hardship shall be deemed potentially capable of causing the existing facility to alter its services to such a degree that it will adversely impact the citizens of Alva, Oklahoma? And can the proposed healthcare facility be adequately served by the city's existing utility systems and/or infrastructure? And will the proposed healthcare facility not cause an increase in the cost of medical care, which would adversely impact the citizens of Alva, the City of Alva? As I've spoken with Mr. Cunningham regarding our, you know, what options we have in consideration of this application, he's advised that this is going to be similar to consideration we would give a bid. Our ordinance would be comparable to what we would consider our spec sheet in a bid project. The ordinance is set forth by the council, just like the specs would be set forth by the city as well. Those are the conditions and protections that we put into our documentation to make sure that we get what we need for the City of Alva, that we protect the interests of the people of the City of Alva. The ordinance is established to, among other things, protect the healthcare interests of the City of Alva while seeking to expand access to healthcare services. That being said, when we receive bids, we are not allowed to place conditions on accepting those bids. We are not allowed to change those bids. We are not allowed to alter that bid in any way. And just as, that's the case with the bid process, with an application process for this permit, we are not allowed to alter the application either. The application is what we're considering, and the ordinance is, does the application meet the terms of the ordinance? The terms is outlined above. With that, our options are to either approve the application as is, deny the application as is, or the other option that's out there that hasn't been taken would been to, for the applicant to withdraw their application in consideration of the conditions set forth in our ordinance. The application has not been withdrawn, therefore we are here to make a decision. The Planning Commission, upon meeting on this, did have a motion to deny, which was approved unanimously with complete body. And that is the recommendation that is before us today. I will add that there are representatives from Integris as well as Shore Medical Center in the room. I would say that any, any information coming forth at this point from either of those sides would be biased towards their preference. But we do have with us Mr. Rick Wagner, who is the gentleman whose firm, and him conducted the study and review for the risk to the local healthcare system. And if there are any questions regarding the Id Bailey report, I would allow council to ask those of Mr. Wagner. Id Bailey was recommended to us as one of two firms by the Oklahoma Office of Rural Health. The Id Bailey's a, you know, reputable firm nationwide, does this kind of stuff. This is their wheelhouse. They do not have a dog in this fight. They are an independent party, and so I feel like any information that we get from them would not be biased towards one side or the other, but towards the best interest or at least the knowledge that they have of rural healthcare and what would or wouldn't be an impact of this application for permit. So at that, council members, this is your discussion. Please discuss this matter to the extent you need to in order to come to a decision. We have, if it's not in front of you, there is a lot of documentation, both written questions and answers, and as well as other information. If we need to go get it, we'll get it. This is, I think, all of the information that's been brought about through the Planning Commission's work has been adequate for them to come to unanimous decision, and I think it should be the same here. I will, if there's no discussion. Is there a motion regarding this gen item?
I'll make a motion and we deny the Integris Healthcare Facility application.
There's a motion by Mr. Benson, second by Dr. Hannaford, to deny the application from Integris. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
No.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Melton?
No.
Stelling?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number eight is Discussion and Approval of the Appointment. Thank you, Mr. Rick Wagner, for traveling so far to join us this evening. We appreciate the work you did on behalf of our We appreciate the work you did on behalf of our city. Item eight is discussion and approval of the appointment of Matt Tucker to the Alva Recreation Complex Board for a three-year term. Rachel Spellman will be coming off of the Recreation Complex Board in October. She has expressed interest to be replaced on that board, so I've been speaking to different folks in town. Matt Tucker has volunteered at the rec park in a few different capacities, both with help with grounds work and as well as helping coach kids and that kind of thing. And so he is interested in serving in that capacity, and therefore I present to the Council for appointment, Matt Tucker.
Do I make a motion to approve Matt Tucker to the Alva Recreation Board Complex for a three-year term?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Eckhart, to appoint Matt Tucker to the Alva Recreation Complex Board for a three-year term. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Item nine is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Citizens can approach the podium and make comment. We've got to ask that you please identify yourself, and we will allow you two minutes to speak. Is there anyone that would care to make public comment?
I just want to thank the Council for your consideration and support of our hospital and understanding how important healthcare is in the community, not only for, as an employer, but as a provider of healthcare for your businesses and being able for the community to thrive and not judge and judge for bodies. So we appreciate your consideration and all your support.
Thank you, Candace. Any other comments? Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. Item ten is remarks and inquiries by Council members. Do Council members have any remarks or inquiries? There being done, we'll adjourn the Alva City Council meeting.